July fourteenth meeting of the Paducah Planning Commission to order and ask that you join us as we stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sommer, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ben Barry.
Here.
Commissioner Bradford.
Here.
Commissioner Morrison, Commissioner Pollard, Commissioner Schramke.
Here.
Commissioner Wade.
Here.
Chair Crisillas.
Here. Mr. Wade, do you have the minutes motion?
I move that the reading of the minutes for the June sixth, two thousand twenty-two meeting be waived and that the minutes of said meeting, as prepared by staff, be approved as written.
Second by Schramke and Bradford. Are there any corrections, additions, changes? If not, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Wade.
Aye.
Commissioner Ben Barry.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
Commissioner Schramke.
Aye.
Chair Crisillas.
Aye. Mr. Ben Barry, you have our first item of business, which is an urban renewal and community development agency item.
Yes. I move that the URCDA find that the property located at six thirty-three Fountain Avenue is surplus property. I further move the bid of one hundred for, one hundred dollars for the property is accepted. I further move the property be transferred to Kevin Boyd, subject to the standard clause applied in the Fountain Avenue redevelopment area stating that the property would revert back to the city if the owner fails to comply with the submitted proposal and substantially complete the project within two years.
Second.
Second by Wade. Mr. Sommer, would you like to give a brief explanation?
This is a proposal for either a new single-family home or a duplex in the Fountain Avenue neighborhood. Both are principally permitted and allowable on the proposed lot. It would be an approximate eleven hundred square foot, single-family home. He's not sure of the size of the duplex if he goes that route. But it is in the neighborhood commercial quarter zone, so it's not over purview of Hark. But he would have to comply with exterior standards that fire prevention would enforce.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak to the motion tonight? Are there any comments? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ben Barry.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
Commissioner Schramke.
Aye.
Commissioner Wade.
Aye.
Chair Crisillas.
Aye. Our first planning commission petition is a rezoning. Ms. Schramke, I believe you have that item.
I do. I move that this commission adopt a resolution recommending the highway business zone classification of property located at fifty-three forty-five Hinkleville Road. I further move this commission adopt the following findings of fact in support of said recommendation. The parcels, although currently vacant, are urban in character because commercial uses surround these properties. Commercial vehicular uses are highly prevalent along the Highway sixty corridor and in the immediate vicinity, both in the city of Paducah and in McCracken County. Therefore, the future utilization of these parcels would be commercial as well. The north parcels have one point of ingress egress into, onto Highway sixty and no sidewalks. Therefore, they are dependent upon motor vehicle access, which is a hallmark of the highway business zone. Highway business zone borders this property on all four sides. Therefore, this site would be a continuation of this zone. In two thousand twenty, the average annual daily traffic count was just west of the site was fourteen thousand three hundred nineteen vehicles.
Second by Ben Barry. This is an owner requested annexation to the city. Any property that comes into the city is automatically an R one, and then it comes before this commission for us to determine what that property should actually, what zone that property should actually be in. And you've heard that the request is that it be a highway business zone for the reasons that were listed. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak tonight? Please come forward, come up to here and give us your name, please.
Hi, my name is Jim Whitman, and I just have a couple of questions because the Reed property is somewhere close to about twenty-four acres, and it goes from Highway sixty all the way back to Harris Road. Okay? And we own about two and a quarter acres on Harris Road that is surrounded on three sides by the Reed property. So my question is, there's a creek that runs essentially behind Tractor Supply and makes it way up to, towards Hucks, but not quite there. There are, I think there's about eight and a quarter acres, plus or minus a little bit, that are on the Highway sixty side of, uh, that are on, that are on the, of the creek. Yes, ma'am. Okay. So I'm, I'm just curious. What is the request for being zoning? And the reason I'm asking specifically that is because I think in what somebody, I guess, ma'am, what you were reading, it said that that property is surrounded on all four sides by, or I guess it's commercial property. My property's not commercial property, and I'm surrounded on three sides by the Reed property. So I'm, I'm just, I'm hoping that it's just that stuff that's on the Highway sixty side of the creek. Is there any intel there?
Sorry. Would you like to comment?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Whitman. The property in question is three point four or five acres that is on the Highway sixty side. Twelve point four or five acres of her total property is in the city. The other piece of property that is on Harris Road is not annexed into the city at this time.
Okay, great. As soon as you said that three point whatever acres.
No, that was a good question.
Thank you very much. I don't object. I've just, it's more curious, you know.
No problem. That's what we're, that's what we're hearing for, yeah.
Thank you very much for your time and patience. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this item of business? Are there any comments or questions? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Schramke.
Aye.
Commissioner Wade.
Aye.
Commissioner Ben Barry.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
Chair Crisillas.
Aye. Mr. Wade, do you have the next item of business?
I move that this commission adopt a resolution recommending the convenience and service zone classification for property located at sixteen thirty North Friendship Road. I further move that this commission adopt the following findings of fact in support of said recommendation. One, the parcel is urban in character. Two, the parcel begins as a transition point to single-family homes in both the city and county. The convenience and service zone is intended to provide convenience shopping areas to service nearby residential areas. Three, North Friendship Road is proposed to be widened in this area, which will facilitate and encourage commercial growth. Four, the site is approximately six hundred forty feet away from North Friendship Road and Blandville Road intersection, thereby further facilitating and encouraging commercial growth. Five, commercial and service zone borders this property to the north. Therefore, this site would be a continuation of this zone. Six, in two thousand twenty-one, the average daily, the average annual daily traffic count of North Friendship Road between New Hold Road and Blandville Road was seven thousand five hundred and three vehicles. I further move that the following conditions be placed upon said approval as follows. One, no automobile parentheses rental, sales, service, refueling, or washing parentheses closed shall be allowed on the site in perpetuity. Two, all lighting shall be pointed downward or shielded to keep lighting contained to the site. Three, any proposed drive-through windows and/or speaker boards shall be placed to the back of any potential future buildings. And four, any non-residential development shall install evergreen screening and an eight-foot tall minimum privacy fence on the east and west sides of the site.
Second.
Second by Ben Barry.
Due to a potential conflict of interest, I'm going to recuse myself from the discussion and the vote of this, so I'll be leaving the room until after it's over.
We'll call you back. Thank you. This again is a public hearing, because this is zoning change. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in support of this zone change? Please come up to the podium.
Hello, I'm William Evans. Thank you all for letting me come here tonight. The property is just a great location. There seems to be a lot of development going up and down. The, not only is there going to be a three lane, but there's going to be a walking path that goes through there. I think it's just going to be a great asset for the neighborhood and great asset for the city of Paducah. And if you all have any questions, please let me know.
Do you have any idea yet what you plan to do with the property?
There's been a lot of ideas passed down since we owned the property, or excuse me, I've owned the property for seven years. But I think at this time, I'm still just kind of open to the idea, maybe looking for a partner, and then just kind of coming up with a plan. Of course, I'm sure we'd have to go through all the licensing and building and, and other policies that the city of Paducah would have us do before we get anything approved. So I think this is just the first step, and this is the first step that the city of Paducah has agreed to come along with me to partner in having this rezoned since it was just recently annexed into the city. So.
Any questions? Anybody else have a question you'd like to ask? Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this petition? Please come up to the podium. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Burton Washburn. For those who do not know me, Washburn, Ken Lowery. And I'll tell you, I'm just glad to be able to come and, and come before this commission and be on one side or the other. My partner was the attorney for the planning commission for thirty years, and that prevented me from coming over here and arguing any side of any case. And I dearly love real estate and planning, and so I'm glad to be here with you. I'm here on behalf of Randy and Melissa Dumas and Longboat Holdings that owned the property on the south side, and it's a multifamily residential. And I think, I was going to tell you a little story tonight, but I think Mr. Evans has probably already told it. I think Mr. Evans would like to sell his property, and I think he's probably talked to a realtor. And I want to just tell you this story because I think it probably is. And I think a realtor came in and talked to him and said, you know, Mr. Evans, you're on the west side of North Friendship Road, and everything on the west side of North Friendship Road is, is zoned urban residential. And if you want the maximum amount of money for your property, you're going to have to get it zoned commercial. And by the way, Mr. Evans, do you know the city of Paducah now has a special going on for annexation? I bet if you go down there and talk to them about that annexation, I bet they'll even zone your property commercial. And I'd be willing to bet that they came down and talked to Mr. Summers, and Mr. Summers said, well, yeah, we'd love to annex your property. And you know, you got to be one right across the street. I think we could even zone it commercial. I don't have a problem with that. I'm a businessman. I think you all can maximize the value of your property. I don't have any problem with that whatsoever. But I went in and talked to Mr. Summers, and the first thing I asked him was, I'd like to see the development plan. And Mr. Summers said, well, no, said, we don't require a development plan. This is just the initial zoning after annexation. Now, you all have served on this planning commission long enough, and I'm an attorney, and we know that's not true. The chairman just told us that. This property, if it's been finally annexed, is on R one. There's no question about that. So it has a zone. So what you are being asked to do tonight is a map amendment. It's a change of zoning by, there is, that's what it is because it's already got a zone. And I don't think anybody would, would argue that. And let me tell you something else. You all operate, and you know this, under section one twenty-six dash one seventy-six of the Paducah ordinances. And you all been at this, and you know this probably by heart. But let me just read one sentence out of that ordinance to you. The planning commission, as a condition to the granting of any zone change, shall require the submission of a development plan. Period. There's no exception for recently annexed property. Now, let me, let me tell you why that's there. You all can't discuss among yourself, and you can't discuss with me as an attorney representing the joint and property owners. You can't discuss with me the use. You can't discuss access. You can't discuss traffic. You can't discuss noise. You can't discuss topographical issues. None of that can you discuss because you don't have a development plan. Mr. Evans already said he doesn't know what he's going to do with it. And so he's applied for a change of zoning, not to an R two, not to an R three, R four. He's applied for B one. And thank goodness, Mr. Wade has come forward and, and said that you all have already considered some screening and things of that sort. And this particular property, I think I misunderstood, Mr. Wade, how it was bounded on the north, but it's bounded on the south by Mr. and Mrs. Dumas' property, which is multifamily. It's bounded on the west by a church, and it's bounded on the north by a single family. So you've also taken away some of the conditional uses in this proposal, and some of those conditional, conditional uses were very concerning. But I just want to ask you one thing with respect to the procedure. I don't want the zeal of the city to annex property, usurp the properties of this commission in a rezoning of property after it's been annexed. And I think that's the power of this commission, and I think the power is very well outlined, and the requirements are outlined. You have to have a development plan. There's no exception. So if I could just ask you one thing, to leave this property zoned R one until Mr. Evans decides what he's going to do with it, or if a subsequent purchaser comes in and submit to you a development plan, and then you will have fulfilled the requirements according to the very regulations under which you all perform your duties. You will have received a development plan. The second thing I would just like to address is the zone itself. Looking at the west side of North Friendship Road, you have Seglinsky Animal Clinic. It's been there for thirty years. When the county took in zoning, the first thing they did was make Seglinsky commercial. Everything else for a mile and a half north on North Friendship Road on the west side is zoned urban residential. So let's take the east side. The complex known as Guy Gray. They were doing business there fifty years ago. So when the city annexed it probably twenty-five years ago, what did the city do? They brought it in as B one. Logical. Mr. Gray was there selling his wares. No problem there. And what are we doing now? Just what you all said. We're getting ready to take that North Friendship Road and widen it. And that in itself is going to be a buffer, a buffer between the Guy Gray B one tracks and urban residential in the county on the other side. And even on the east side of North Friendship Road, you get past the Guy Gray tracks, and everything there is residential. So what I'm suggesting to you, even with respect to what zone that you all consider, let Mr. Evans bring in a development plan, and let's see what's going to be proposed. If it's a professional office, a daycare center, that'd probably fit in an R four. It doesn't really need to be one, be a B one. Nobody's going to object to that. But when you open this exposure to B one, no development plan has been submitted, then you have to assume the worst that can happen. So I ask you two things. Number one, if you all will follow the ordinance under which this is being decided and wait for a development plan, then you will delay your decision to zone, to rezone this property from what it is today, R one, to whatever the appropriate zone might be. And number two, reconsider what zone is necessary for that property, keeping in mind that everything around this property, everything, is being used for urban residential as defined in the county, or a church, because that's what bounds it on all sides. And I'll be glad to take your all's questions, and if you have any. If Mr. Summers thinks that there's any exception for you all to be able to rezon property without a development plan, if there's any exception in the statute or the ordinance, I'm here. Just tell me where it is. I'll be glad to read it, and I'll be glad to try to argue that point, too.
Does anybody have any questions or comments that you would like to ask?
I do. And Nick, I imagine this is to you. I, too, was concerned when I heard there was not a development plan. Now, does the ordinance state, as, as I'm sure Mr. Washburn says it states, that this type of a change should only go along with a development plan? Is that correct?
I am reading it currently. In the annexation portion specifically, it doesn't say that the development plan is required. But when you go down to the rezoning, that's where it references.
Okay, so therefore you have to read the whole thing before you get the whole picture.
Correct.
I'm sorry. Could you repeat that? My hearing is not very good. Did you find an exception?
No.
Okay, okay.
Now, he said that in the top part, it says for annexation, a development plan is not necessary. But to change the zone, it would be necessary.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
So therefore, my comment was, then you have to read the whole thing before you get the full picture.
Mr. Hudson, isn't the comprehensive plan or the city development plan suffice for a structure to, to look at rezoning for future uses?
The future land use map only refers to properties that are within the city limits at that time. It doesn't refer to annexations.
Well, I think the point is well taken that, you know, we should think about what zone should it be, and how can we know that without a development plan? Not that I'm opposed to changing it from R one to something, but what is the something?
I guess my question would be, what would be the corresponding, the corresponding city zone to what the property that the development next door would have if it was in the city? I guess that's my question.
B one.
It would be B one? The apartment complex?
It's allowed in urbanizing residential.
Okay.
Can I ask another question on this now? Is this a twofold thing that we're doing? This has not been annexed yet, correct?
No, it's been annexed.
It has been annexed. Okay, so now we're just trying to change the, the zone.
Now you're in the sixty-day time period.
So it is an R one in the city now.
Correct.
It's not added to the comprehensive plan because it was just there. So you could use the adjacent properties to foreshadow what the zoning may be.
The adjacent properties in the county.
There's a city B one zone that bumps.
Adjacent, across the street. Adjacent across the street.
Yeah, it's on the other side of Friendship Road.
As I understood you correctly, the apartment complex next door, which he's representing in ownership, would, if it were to ask to be annexed, the appropriate zoning for it would be B1?
Based on, based on B1 being across the street, I would say yes. Because it wouldn't be a spot zone at that point. We wouldn't be, it wouldn't make any sense to rezone to an R4 because there's not any R4 that's around it at all, touches it. So to avoid a spot zoning, that's why B1 was requested. And to make clear, too, that the city didn't request the B1 zone. The petitioner requested the B1 zone.
Okay, so, I'm sorry. Next time I'll send somebody that can hear better than I can. I'm sorry about that. But I think we have established that a development plan is required. I think we've established that. Now, Mr. Wade, the proposal findings that you have, no matter what we do here for a map change, a map amendment and a zone change, we have to follow KRS 10213. So are we making findings that this is in accordance with the comprehensive plan?
I believe they said earlier that the comprehensive plan doesn't cover annexations currently. We are getting ready to work on the comprehensive plan in the next year. However, we haven't started that process yet. So this property wouldn't have been included in the comprehensive plan for the city because it wasn't in the city.
Right. And I realize that your goal and objectives portion has expired and that you are doing that. So now that we know that, then the finding that you would then look at is that the existing zone classification given to the property is inappropriate. Is that the finding that's being made?
I believe so.
Is that what you read in the findings? That's the question he's asking.
So that's the finding of the commission. If you decide to act on this tonight, that R1 would not be appropriate zone?
Again, that's because all properties that are annexed are annexed as R1 and then a determination is made after that, what would be appropriate for the property.
Correct. Okay, okay, okay. Just so I understand you.
Sure.
I have a question. What is the reasoning that the petitioner or the person, Ms.?
I'm sorry.
Ms. and Mrs. Dumas is opposed to rezoning at anything. What is the reasoning by you being here opposing this zone, this zone change?
Well, the reason is, is because my clients have a multifamily residential on the south border of this property. And that multifamily residential could very well be adversely affected for some of the uses allowed within a B1 zone. So for instance, without anybody ever coming back to this commission, they could put in a Dollar General the next day. Okay? A Dollar General is now going to have a single-family residential on the north, a church on the west and multifamily on the south. Is that really what you all want? You know, so some of those uses just are not compatible with residential. Some of them are. A professional office building, daycare, like I said, nobody would care. But until, and I think that's why the city, over the years, and your ordinance is not any different from, really, from the one in Lexington, Kentucky that I've reviewed and other cities. Your ordinance requires this development plan. And it's for a very, very good reason. Just for the reason that you all could say, "Do you really object to daycare? No?" Okay, well, sit down. But we can't say that because we don't know what's going to go in there. And so that's why we want that development plan to come in there. You know, there are other issues with that property, too. You say it's 600 and some odd feet from the traffic light. Have you seen the stacking that occurs there right now? The stacking lanes? It's difficult to get in and out of our apartment sometimes because the traffic is stacked back behind the entrance. And is a daycare or professional office going to make a difference? No, it's not going to make any difference. Would it hugs? But you are not going to allow that because you're going to cut out refueling. But could some high-traffic use? Sure, it could affect it. So that's why, that's why. We just, we just ask that you all follow your own rules and regulations and request that so that we can all have this discussion, knowing what's coming.
Any other questions? Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this item of business? I guess I have a question about whether we could postpone the rezoning of this until you have a development plan? Is that a possibility?
That is a possibility.
I think that's a very good idea because I think if we go by the book, we pretty much know how the vote would go right now. So, or I know how I would vote right now. Let me just qualify that and narrow it down to me. So I would, I would.
Would you enter, would you?
I would like to propose that we do, I'd like to make a motion, that we do postpone this until we have a development plan to get the proper zoning in place. Because I'm not sure that the B1 is the proper one after we see a development plan.
Nick, you made a comment about a window of time from annexation until zoning. Do we run afoul of that window by doing this?
We should, I mean, 60 days. We should be within that, within for next month.
Right.
Well.
We would have to check.
My thought is, since this would be the first hearing on it, if it's tabled generally, since it kicked off within the 60-day timeframe, I'm thinking we could just simply bring it back up to the commission, re-notify the property owners.
Yep.
Would you like to change your amendment?
Sure.
We don't have a second, by the way.
Vice Chair Shramke, and also just a point of clarification. I think the terminology that you would be looking for is to table generally.
Okay. I make a motion that we tabled generally this proposed request to change the zoning to B1 until we have a development plan indicating what the proper zoning would be for that development.
And I would like to reach out to our legal counsel, too, for interpretation of the ordinance and the applicability of a development plan. As the Planning Commission, you know, the purpose is to determine the highest and best use of a property and its future uses. So a development plan isn't, doesn't necessarily provide any certainty or longevity. So I would just like to have that consultation with our legal staff.
Absolutely.
I think that's wonderful.
Absolutely. We can take that, because it's continued generally. We could always readdress it at the next meeting.
Yep.
Do I have a second? Ben Berry, thank you. Are there any other comments, questions? Closing the public hearing. Do I have any other questions, comments? Okay. Going to close the public hearing. And would you call the roll, please? Now, this is for the amendment.
Well, it would just be to table.
You're changing, oh, to table, all right.
Commissioner Shramke. Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Ben Berry.
Yes.
Chair Casillas.
Yes. Thank you. Would you call Mr.?
Yeah.
Mr. Bradford back in, please. Mr. Bradford, do you have the next item of business? Are you prepared to read that?
I do.
Thank you.
I move that this commission adopt a resolution recommending the M1 Light Industrial Zone classification for property located at 3404, 3416, and 3420 Park Avenue. I further move that this commission adopt the following findings of fact in support of said recommendation. The initial building will contain an office, which is a commercial use at the point nearest Park Avenue. Two, the intent to facilitate commercial uses near Park Avenue and industrial uses behind them is apparent since the zoning scheme has been in place since at least 1976. Three, the proposed initial building would be in line with the front facade of the existing commercial building. If the zoning were not changed, the building would set further back, thereby creating an uneven view shed. Four, the redevelopment of all three lots would abolish two flag lots, which is contrary to the Paducah subdivision ordinance. And five, M1 Light Industrial Zone borders this property to the south. Therefore, the site would be a continuation of this zone.
Second. Second by Shramke. Is there anyone, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this motion?
Hey, guys. I'm Matt Jennings, the developer in this. And really just here to answer any questions you guys may have. We're looking to put a climate-controlled storage facility there with a nice storefront on the front and office. And going to leave the building that's there intact as is and the office building there beside of it. And might give it a little bit of a facelift at some point. But I mean, that's, I think you've got the plan. So I'm just really just here to answer any questions you may have.
Questions or comments?
Just to note that the drawings in front of you all are the most recent
Am I understanding correctly that this one parcel has two different zonings within it?
Yes.
How did that come about?
It's been that way since 1976, so I'm not sure.
Here's your answer.
Good point.
I'll sit down if you guys don't have anything for me.
Any other questions or comments that you'd like to ask? Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the zone change? Is there anyone here to speak in favor or in opposition to the zone change? Close the public hearing. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Bradford?
Aye.
Commissioner Shramke?
Aye.
Commissioner Wade?
Aye.
Commissioner Ben Berry?
Aye.
Chair Casillas?
And Mr. Ben Berry, you have the next item, please.
I move that this commission open the public hearing regarding case VAC 2022-001, a property located at 1250 South Fourth Street. I further move that the right-of-way closure plat of the area described above be continued generally.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Wade? The petitioner has requested that this particular item be tabled because there are some potential changes that could be made. So I would entertain a motion that we, or that we petition, that we table this particular item.
So moved.
Mr. Bradford made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ben Berry, thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ben Berry?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradford?
Aye.
Commissioner Shramke?
Aye.
Commissioner Wade?
Aye.
Chair Casillas?
Aye.
Our last item of business is to re-adopt the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. As you know, we're going to be working on that in the next year. However, it's important that we go ahead and at least adopt some rules and objectives. There are some minor changes, which Mr. Summer is going to explain to us.
Do we need to go ahead and read the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I apologize.
I move that this commission re-adopt the goals and objectives of the City of Paducah Comprehensive Plan as amended. I further move that this commission find as fact that the original research for the comprehensive plan is still valid pursuant to KRS 100-197.
Second.
Second by Bradford. Now, I'm sorry.
Thank you all. A little bit of background as well. We are going to be releasing an RFP for a joint comprehensive plan with McCracken County. Once they have been awarded, or when I say they, the consultant, they'll have one year to complete the comprehensive plan. We do expect for both the city and county planning commissions to have a role in developing the comprehensive plan, of course. So it is overdue and I'm glad to hear that we are working together on this comprehensive plan.
Absolutely.
But we are proposing a few changes within our goals and objectives to keep us legal for the next five years while the comprehensive plan is being worked on. Under Chapter 2, which is the area-wide snapshot, what's being removed is buffers between residential districts and non-residential districts with a nuisance potential. And that is something that we've already addressed via a text amendment, which is actually your most recent text amendment, where we require now a buffer between residential and non-residential uses. So we're proposing to remove that. Provide incentives to take advantage of the river in downtown to promote higher density, high-quality housing. And we have fulfilled that through our upper-story residential incentives. Provide land near I-24 for commercial, business, park, and industrial uses to increase the workforce. The business parks have been established already. The Information Age Park, Technology Park, areas that zone POP, Land Office Park. So we've taken that out and are focusing more on the commercial and industrial types of uses. Just a point of correction. Improve arterial and collector roads to facilitate the high volumes on these roads. I just said, it should say major arterials. Promote the I-69 and I-66 corridors. I reached out to District 1 highways. The I-66 corridor is no longer viable, but of course, I-69 is, which is being worked on now. So they, the Transportation Cabinet would like I-69 to remain in the comprehensive plan, but the need for I-66 is no longer there, so it can be removed. And under economic development, it's been changed to enhance existing community character. Improve enforcement of existing ordinances addressing property yard maintenance. That is something that's done by fire prevention at this time. And recruit a full-service convention hotel and recruit or renovate a family-style hotel in downtown Paducah. Half of that has been fulfilled with the Holiday Inn. And hopefully, the family-style hotel will be coming along soon as well. So, which of course, has been in the news. So we expect that goal and objective to be fulfilled rather soon. But we didn't want to go overboard in changing too much since we're going to be working with the consultant. But those were obvious changes that could be made at this time to what we have.
Thank you for your explanation. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments that you have about the changes or the goals and objectives? It's pretty much what we've had for the last five years. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shramke?
Aye.
Commissioner Wade?
Aye.
Commissioner Ben Berry?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradford?
Aye.
Chair Casillas?
Aye.
If there is no other business to come before the commission tonight, we stand adjourned. Our next meeting is August the 1st and we have concluded at 6:15. Thank you all very much for being here. Thank you all very much for being here.